Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our service of men and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Frank Gildeary and Jose Miguel Tatis Camilo. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yeah.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 13 of 2024.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution Number 13, 2024. This resolution is a liquor license transfer. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. Anyone who would like to speak on this piece of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizens' participation. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, no business at this time.
Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do, Mr. President. I would just like to thank the Scranton Police Department along with the DPW for all their help this past weekend during the Scranton St. Patrick's Day Parade. I thought they did an outstanding job keeping all the people safe out on the parade route and all the marchers and everybody with a lot of young families, even though it wasn't the best day. It was a little rainy. There were a lot of people that were out there, and I thought our police department and DPW did a great job helping them clean up afterwards and helped set some things up prior to the parade, so I want to thank them.
I'd also like to echo those sentiments. I do work with the race prior to the parade, and they help to clear the streets and keep the streets free of cars so the racers are safe and helped with a lot of the cleanup and everything, as Mr. King said, so thank you very much to police, DPW, fire, and other city workers.
I also like to echo those sentiments, but I also have two quick announcements. So, the Ukrainian Club on Railroad Avenue in Scranton, Sunday, March 24th, from 2:00 to 5:00, is going to have their second annual Easter ham and kebab raffle. It will be, they'll have 15 raffle rounds, which means 15 winners will win one 10-pound ham and two rings of kebab. And then also, our friends at Friends of the Poor will have their annual Easter food basket giveaway. It will be held Tuesday, March 26th. They'll have two spots, I'm sorry, at the Scranton Cultural Center and then the drive-through distribution. Maximum of four families per car and one Easter basket per family. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one more. And this was sent to us from Chanel Kiers, who's the outreach coordinator for the city of Scranton. This coming Saturday, there will be, as part of the Sprucing Up Scranton Project, Saturday, March 16th, there'll be a cleanup and their meeting at Trips Park at 2199 Dorothy Street. I believe they're meeting at 10:15 a.m. If anyone's interested in volunteering to help up with the cleanup over in that section, Trips Park section of Scranton. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what? While we're talking about Trips Park section of Scranton, Frank, can you reach out to maybe the business administrator, Eileen Cipriani, see if the Trips Park Community Center has reached out to them for any community center money? I know that they replaced half of their roof that needed repairs a year or so ago, and they were looking for some money to complete the rest of the roof. So, if we could just find out an update on if that's occurring or if any communication is happening with the community center?
I'll reach out to her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hoadanis?
Union contracts are still not on the website. For the firefighters, it's now 344 days, and for the police, it's 228 days. Speaking of things that are overdue, is the Pocket Park ready for primetime?
I know it was open, but I don't know, the one downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they opened it right before the parade. I don't know if it's 100%. I know they were supposed to put in a couple other benches or something was supposed to go there.
Okay. Just a suggestion, I saw somewhere in the paper, I believe, that it was going to be opened or dedicated to Mayor Dougherty, but I think I have a different idea. I mean, if there needs to be a ribbon cutting and, you know, pictures taken, you know, that's fine, but why don't we dedicate that park to our hometown heroes, our first responders, people who have died, you know, serving their country? We can even get banners and put them up, you know, Captain Robson, a firefighter, John Wilding, a police officer, and there are others. And I just think that would be a nice gesture and also would be an opportunity to educate the, you know, Scranton public, especially our children, about the legacy they've inherited. So, just a thought. I was very pleased to see in the paper that the credit rating for the city's gone up two notches. That's excellent. I also saw in the story that S&amp;P Standards Empowers still has words of caution. One of the things they pointed out was the $7 million damage to our infrastructure in last year's flooding events. And, you know, one of the problems the city's had systemically has been the long-term neglect of its infrastructure. This building's a case in point, okay? The firehouses were neglected over time. Our park system was neglected over time in Ney' Oak Pool. So, I'm hoping that, you know, in the euphoria of this good news, that we still have leaders who are willing to, you know, look down the road, and as difficult as it may be to dedicate funding towards some of these long-term infrastructure projects, we start doing it, okay? I also saw in the paper, you know, that the mayor's looking to increase the number of electronic vehicle charging stations in the Linden parking garage, and I think that's a very good thing. I no longer drive, so I don't really have skin in this game, but I wonder what, has anybody been thinking about the number of downtown residents who do drive and are going to need a place to charge their vehicles 10, 20 years from now when they've converted over to electronic vehicles? Maybe this is a conversation the city could start having with the aid of the Chamber of Commerce with all these private developers. They need to be coming up with a plan, is how they're going to provide a charging station opportunity for all these downtown residents. You know, you've got all these medical students and students from, you know, the University of Scranton. It's going to turn around twice. There are going to be a lot of electric vehicles in the city, and this could impact on, you know, who wants to rent downtown or buy a downtown apartment, so I'd like to see that happen. Has there been any further information on the pollution of Roaring Brook and the Lackawanna River and any attempts by DEP and Pennsylvania American Water to initiate a cleanup? Nothing yet?
I haven't heard nothing, nothing yet on cleanup.
Yeah. I'd hate to see that thing, you know, go to the back burner because so much work is done to clean up the Lackawanna River. And finally, do we have any takers or have they made a decision on the RFP for financial forecasting? I know we had something like five bids come in. They were due on February 29th. Have we gotten any further on that? Anybody, anything from the administration?
I did watch it online, the bid openings, but nothing on if they've chosen anybody.
Have the property tax bills gone out yet?
I don't know.
Does anybody know when they're due to go out?
I thought it was the end of February.
I'm sorry?
My understanding was like the end of February, early March, so.
Okay, so you haven't received yours.
The last I heard, that was the last I heard.
You haven't received yours, because I still want to see tax relief for the flood victims.
I got mine. I don't know. My tax bill for 2024?
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't own properties, so I don't see them anymore, but I'm concerned about tax relief for the flood victims. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Joan, I think that was, that was all completed by Friday, by the ninth. We had six months to do that, and I believe the paperwork is all finished.
Frank, can you check with Scranton tomorrow and ask them about the dedication of the Pocket Park? Get an update at least.
I'll get a date, yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rashida Lovely, and I'm the Director of Operations for the Black Chamber of Commerce as well as the Director of Operations for NEPA PAC. I'm also the CEO of a nonprofit called Free Foundation. And what I was hoping to discuss today was this affordable housing issue that we have in Scranton, not low income, but affordable housing. So, as a person that runs a lot of social programs, juvenile reaffirmation, emergency rent payments, bereavement services, we find that there's a lot of commonality in a lot of the issues, and it seems to lead back to housing insecurity. So, according to data, the average single, the median single income in Scranton is $23,000 a year, and the median household income is $44,800 a year. Rent, on average, is about $700, but that is pretty much stagnant. No one's moving out of their $700 a month rent property, and so rent's moving forward, upwards of $1,200 to $1,500 a month, which is unaffordable. So, what we would like to do is we would like to affect real change. We're not interested in having developers come in and try to do the same 80/20 models that they've been doing for decades. That doesn't work. We don't need 20% affordable and 80% luxury. What we need is true affordable housing. So, how do we get there? Thanks to Congressman Cartwright and his vision, he wants to see green affordable housing with partnerships with Nebula, which is finally here in the Luzerne County area, and we would like to do this right here in the city of Scranton. We don't want to look to other cities to figure out our issues. We want to figure them out for ourselves. We need to be progressive in how we approach it, and so one of the ways that we would like to see this done is we'd like to go into the poor areas. We don't want to continue revitalizing downtown. We want to go to the poorest areas of the city, and we want to revitalize that area. We want to do gentrification, but the right way. So, how do we do it? We want to bring green technology and initial builds, infrastructure builds, to 18505 ZIP code. And we would like, we would like the council to consider partnering with us on this, the municipality. We have the partnership with Nebula to begin this project using the Community Change Grant along with the community, no, not community, it's the Climate Reduction Act grants that are going to be available, and it's upwards of $2 billion. So, all we're asking for is for the council people to please consider supporting our efforts to do real affordable housing here. We are going to peg them to median incomes. We're not going to allow it to be market rates, and we're also asking, if you look at the sheet where we have our ask, we only have two simple asks. We would like you to partner with us and the municipality to partner with us, and we would like to use the land and properties that's on the land bank to start a pilot program. We don't have a lot of time because our deadlines, if you can see at the bottom of the sheet, our deadlines for the Climate Reduction Grant is April 1st, and the Community Change Grant is November, it's a rolling grant, and it ends in November 23rd of this year. We don't have time. What we would like is your support, and we're hoping by next week we can get some kind of answers, and if not, we can still move forward with our initiative, but we would like to do it in partnership because, again, we need to be partners in everything together. We want to move the city of Scranton forward together. We don't want to try to do what didn't work before. We don't want the outside developers doing the same models they've been doing and working on downtown and revitalizing downtown over and over again. We want to represent the entire city, so I hope you stand with us to get this thing done, and hopefully we can get it done pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashida. I apologize for your first name. Will you leave your email address at contact? Kathy. Norma Jeffries?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And last week, when I was speaking about the street signs, you know, when you stand here, you have no idea what you're saying. You think you know what you're saying, but when I went home and I thought, what did I say? So, then I listened to the replay, and one of the things that I did hear that I did not hear while I was here, and, you know, Mr. Schuster, I think I heard you say that the $330,000 is spent, and I thought, what? It's spent on what? What was the 300 and some odd dollars spent on?
So, yeah, I do.
Can you just do that in your time and not mine? And I thought of that because I lose time when I discuss.
I had it for you tonight. I do have it.
Okay, thank you. So, I thought of that, of what you had said, and I thought, where are the, where's the money? I think that's a game, where's the money? But, so that was what I wanted to say, and I also received information from other people about what I had said last week and what I've been saying for six years, is that not only are the residents of Scranton at a disadvantage as we ride around and drive around Scranton, but what about our police and fire, our emergency, our Pennsylvania ambulance services? And I see a red responders or something that looks like a new one? You know, these are people that are in an emergency situation to get to people, so I wonder how they're making out. And I know you have a GPS, most of us have GPSs, but when you have to think, when the GPS says, take a right at the left corner, you know, it would be so much better to see the sign up there. So, I just wanted to add that to it, and I'll wait for your response, Mr. Schuster, on that. Another thing that I, of a concern of mine, I'm sorry I was late getting here. I do tutor kids after school on Tuesdays, so that throws me a little bit late getting here for caucuses. So, when I saw that it was on the Pennsylvania, the parking, that's another thing. I do use the Pango app when I'm downtown, and Mr. King, no, it doesn't tell you that it's after 5:00. I've had people tell me that, ask me that, you know, I say, well, come to council, tell them about it. It does not anywhere on the app tell you that it's no longer valid after 5:00. Also, with everything being such technology, I don't understand why they just can't just program the system. I worked with computers and programming all my career. They can program that computer to just turn it off because they know that they run around there with their little, you know, their little guns, you know, to say when we've expired on our parking, so it should be an easy fix for them to put and turn those parking meters off at 5:00. Also, their, their app, if anyone uses it, needs improvement. I'm sorry I wasn't here to see if they did speak on their app. It needs improvement because when you pull up to the kiosk and you take out your app, the first thing it's going to ask you, it shows you the map of the businesses that you're around. Well, that's good, but then you go to the next screen and ask you for the zone. What zone are you in? I don't know. So, now I've got to back up and look up to the zone that's on the little placard over the kiosk, and it'll have two or three different zones. I don't know what zone I'm in. You know, I pushed the first one. Fortunately, I've never gotten a ticket, so I guess I'm pushing the right zone. And you're right, you can leave that zone and go to another zone in the city, and you don't get charged for that, you know? One of the things that you had said is that it's $1 to park in the garages, and I think it's $2 an hour on the street, you know? And I thought, hmm, I'm paying $2 an hour to park on the street. And I come down a lot because I like that Commonwealth coffee shop down there. So, I do come to town a lot and to frequent those places. So, when I saw that, you said $2, and I thought, $2 is a dollar? Well, there is a parking lot, a parking garage across the street. I said, maybe I should start going there, but I don't feel safe going in to the parking garages. So, that was a concern and a little aha moment for me when you said that it was $2 in the garage, I'm sorry, $1 in the garage, and I pay $2 on the street. So, that was a concern. So, maybe you could just find out, you know, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, and, you know, every dollar that I spend is very valuable to me. Now, for the newspaper, I'm sorry that Les isn't here tonight, when he mentioned about the sports section of the, the paper not being there, and it's all local sports. Well, today, they did quite a big spread on Barclay coming to the Philadelphia Eagles. So, as a football fan, I was thrilled to see that, and I'm sure he was as well. So, had it not appeared in the paper, I think there would have been an uproar with us football fans that they didn't cover it, but they did cover it and it was in the paper, so I'm sorry. I'm sure that Les saw it as well. So, that's my concerns for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Augustini. I live over in Green Ridge, and I'm president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. I'm here for several different items. The first one is the ordinance that you're looking to pass regarding Deacon Street, the one-way to two-way on Deacon Street to Sanderson. We are very happy that the post is doing well. They've been a fabulous asset to our community, and I understand why they want that section to be two-way. What I'm requesting is that they add two more stop signs, that it's not just the stop signs on Deacon Street, but there's also stop signs on Sanderson Avenue. We have people who are coming up from the plot racing to get to the corners and either beat the light, or they're coming from the corners and heading down to the plot so they can, you know, bypass it to get up to Main Avenue. And I really think that a four-way stop would be extremely appropriate at that location.
Excuse me, Laura?
Yes.
You're asking for a four-way stop?
At Deacon and Sanderson.
Oh, okay. So, the Dutchies right there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, that, that one. So, currently, it's one-way from Sanderson toward the post, and they've requested, you have an ordinance, to make it two-way, only from the post back towards Sanderson. The rest of it would still stay one-way. But I think, and there, and then there will be a stop sign on Deacon facing Sanderson in the same way, coming the other way. But I do think that additional stop signs need to be added there. We have had an increase in traffic. I myself was in a little accident at that location, and I did a right-to-know and found out that there had been 20 accidents over the past 20 years, and there had been four accidents in the past four months. So, there's an increase in traffic and an increase in accidents at that location. I also think that a no parking for about 30 feet from that intersection would be advantageous, again, opening up sightlines for safety. The second item I have is on 1615 Munce Street. We've been trying to get information from zoning and from various people in this, in the administration regarding what is a perceived violation of a zoning ruling, and I've had a really hard time getting anything. I did submit, I first submitted my request through 311. I then submitted a right-to-know request, you know, getting violations, citations, et cetera, but it had nothing that had occurred in the past year. And it's been reported to 311 and zoning in the past three months that there is a perceived violation of the zoning variance that was denied for that location. I just want to know, and the neighbors in that area want to know, has somebody checked it out? Was a citation issued, a violation issued? What's going on with that property? And I just haven't been able to get any answers. Next, as the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, we looked to have the street closed for our Easter egg hunt. And I went online to do the event planning form, to submit all the, whatever needed to be done, but there's nothing in the front of that application that tells you all of the items that you need to submit for that event request. So, I get to a point, oh, you need insurance. Okay. Off we go, we get insurance. I can't go any further until I put the insurance in. Next one I get, oh, you need a site plan and an evacuation plan and an emergency plan and all of these other things. I don't even know what else you need because I couldn't get past that. Suggestion, put some kind of a list. You need $1 million in insurance, you need a site plan, you need an emergency plan, and whatever else is needed so that when people go to apply for these things, they have them all together and you can go jupe-doo right through the application. We decided not to request a street closure because it became difficult for us to do, and I didn't have, then did not have time for it to get to the right people in a timely manner. We did get insurance, which was a good thing. And last, but not least, the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association is hosting an egg hunt on Saturday, March 23rd, at Pretzel Park at 1:00 p.m. All are invited. We do request pre-registration, and you can do that by emailing the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldenberg, can you contact the zoning office and find out what's going on with that 1615 Munce Street?
I made note of it. I'll reach out in the morning.
Thank you very much.
And also, also, might as well do the traffic, see if they'll do a traffic study at Deacon and Sanderson if there hasn't been one there for a four-way stop sign?
Yeah, I'll have the city engineer do a traffic study, and I'm not sure, you might be able to amend the legislation if it's approved.
Okay. And one last thing for, I believe Scott Grass, my director of parks, has a list when they do different events at the parks. I believe there is a list put together. If you would email him, and if there is, would you send it, email it to the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I want to talk about the rental ordinance of 2022. Mr. Smurl? Mr. Smearle, I know this was the week before you were, were appointed, but I just was wondering, does anyone know how the rental registrations are being handled from the new ordinance that was passed, how past years are being handled? Does anyone know? So how prior years? Because the way it looks like it, first of all, I think it's unfortunate that you got hit in 2023 with everything from the old ordinance. I don't think it's fair to be hit back for many years. You know, I got a bill for $970 when I never got a bill before, and it was just, that was the first bill I got. Second, I believe this ordinance says it repealed the old one, but doesn't state anything about old, old rental registration from past years. So I don't even know if it's enforceable anymore, because it doesn't even say anything about the, the old, whatever was existing. But does anyone have an idea? Because I have three other properties in the city of Scranton. I got one for 2016 and up, got one for 2019 and up, and I got one for 2020 and up. So does anyone know when that was voted on or what the current, I guess, what, what they're doing in the rental registration?
I'm trying to recall, but I can't guarantee that I'm right, but I thought they were exonerated, the previous ones. Is that, was that our understanding, that the ones prior would?
I just recently got the third one. You know, I was wait, waiting for it.
Like I said, I'm not sure. It's in my mind, so I, I might have heard it that way or read it that way, but I knew that past ones might have been exonerated. But that's something we could check, that someone can check.
But no one else knows about that?
I just recall, I might be, like, I might be wrong. I might go back farther or before that, but I do remember seeing something to that effect.
Okay, because I do have an idea. Actually, I, I made something today. I think this is how they might be doing the rental registrations. I'm not sure. But it's, as you can see, 2016 is a pretty big piece of the pie, so I think they just give it a spin. I owe 2017 and up. So I'm not sure, just, just a hunch. But if someone could look into that seriously, I do have, I'm going to court this week, so if I could find out, reach out to someone and find out before I go to court what I'm actually responsible for, because I got three different properties with three different amounts.
So each of those properties are from, they go back to a different year?
Yes, and they were all owned prior to 2016. So it wasn't like I just bought the property and only owed from that year on. So they were all owned, owned prior to 2016. So if we could, if we could get some answers. Is there anyone I could follow up with before the 15th, before I go to the magistrate so I could have something when I go there?
Well, Mr. Volenberg could reach out and ask, I mean, or take a dive into the, the ordinance, but I, I, like I said, I'm not sure what I remember. I just remember there was some, some dialogue in there where they might have been satisfied. Maybe I'm wrong, but, but it sticks in my head a little bit.
Even into 2022 ordinance?
No, the ones prior to the updated ordinance.
Okay.
That's all I've been trying to, like, I don't have it in front of me, and, but that's, I kind of remember something to that effect.
Okay, now just to, just to-
The actual dates I don't remember, just prior to the new ordinance.
Okay.
And the new process.
Now, when you, when you said, was that in the ordinance of 2022 or no?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it was there.
Might have been part of a dialogue we had maybe in caucus, or maybe when it was presented to us. I just remember something to that effect. I'm, I'm not positive. I can't say yes to you and, and be wrong.
Yeah, no, no.
I said it's a possibility. That's why I said, you know, we could look at it.
Yeah, because I, I did actually run into a few other people that owned houses prior, and they only got 2023 and up. So there's just a lot of inconsistency with, so, but okay.
Frank, Mr. Volenberg, all of that's going through Robin Salama, correct?
Correct.
Because she's the rental, what's her title, her actual title?
Rental Registration Manager.
And she would be handling all of this? Is she taking, have you reached out to her?
No, no, I, I don't feel too comfortable with that office.
Okay, that, that would be the office that would handle that. I would think, I would think you would get a clear answer from that office.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I understand, but even when I tried to get my permit back in January, I was told about a letter of recommendation. That's nowhere on the website either that I needed a letter of recommendation, but I was told that, so.
So I think the rental is, it may be all through the, rental is, is one piece, they're just doing rentals, and then you're talking licensing inspection.
I'm just saying, just saying in general, I don't like to go left when I walk into the building.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Thank you.
Brian Scutnik?
Thanks. So whole bunch of right-to-knows I did basically for performance logs that they do. The first one you'll see, this is the employee that resigned, that you guys had a seven-page letter from a while back, that you guys obviously remember. If you look at it, from 10:40 to 11:00 a.m., this employee had another member of code enforcement go to her house, taking pictures of her at home during his shift to report back what she was doing. She was later brought in and questioned by the city's HR, the HR assistant, two attorneys, two union representatives there, Oleski and I believe Selena at the time, before you guys got rid of her. Okay? So let's just keep that in mind for that, the 20 minutes there. Next, you'll see a picture of a vehicle from the city parked at Naog.
So she was questioned about that 20-minute or that-
Why was there a 20-minute lapse in her day? They tried to discipline her, they were going to suspend her, everything.
Okay, thanks.
So just to keep that in mind there. So next, you'll see a vehicle parked at Naog. After that, you'll see what looks like an individual digging in a garbage can at Naog. A little weird to you guys? No, even better. You ready for that one? Next, you'll see the activity log for that inspector. Now, let me just point out, the pictures are not mine since the city claims victim on everything, and it's all we were being stalked in the public park. So Mike over there will talk in a little bit, where he took the pictures and watched. Next, you'll see the activity log, where this inspector documented they did nothing from 9:55 until 11:05, an hour and 10 minutes, no questions asked. Why? Because they parked their vehicle, took off their city attire, and went digging recyclables out of the garbage cans at Naog. The same inspector was reported to be going to the University of Scranton on Monday mornings with his city vehicle to pick up the used kegs from the beer parties at the university because he's using them for scrap. But that's the inspector that's going to go looking to see what another one's doing for 19-minute laps so they could go home and change a tampon? But that's the conduct. So now we'll continue there. Next, you'll see another one for another inspector. This one is actually, they're, they're all stapled together, there's several. And you'll see, perfect night for Virgil to be here because he could attest to it. Whole bunch of city cars were parked at a restaurant in Southside a month back. I submitted a right-to-know because I have a garage right there where I keep all of my toys. City tells me when I talked to Selena, there's no misconduct in this department, so I did the right-to-know. They fought me and told me it was a safety concern for me to know where the city inspectors were. It's not a safety concern for me to know two months ago where a city inspector was, where I have the pictures of it. So where were they? If you look at those activity logs, they all stopped working around 11:00, and then it returned to work till about 2:00 because they enjoyed a three-hour lunch at Saco's. That's everybody in here paying for that lunch.
Please, no outbursts, or I have you removed. Thank you.
So you have Andrew Sunday, who's the manager over there, submitted an affidavit as part of one of my right-to-knows on February 8th, and his affidavit stated, "It is my personal practice to gauge general productivity," when it came to the right-to-know, or the activity logs. What is he gauging? Because he's clearly not looking at activity logs if there's three-hour lapses. It's theft. So how about some legislature to maybe hire an auditor like you did with the, the gas receipts years back, where the city did their own internal audit and couldn't find anything? But miraculously, we hire an outside auditor, and there's thousands missing for gas years ago. So next, you'll see another activity log for an inspector, 1:20 to 2:20 on an entire, on a day, an hour to look for violations? Every single person could leave here, go a different direction, and find a violation in this city in three minutes, but for an hour, this guy couldn't find one in a vehicle? You know what I mean? Virgil posts them every day. Does he want to, can, can he do a ride-along? Maybe teach them how to do their job because they can't find anything? So what do you do? When you report them, code enforcement gets aggravated and claims they're being harassed, they're being stalked because they're being called out by the misconduct. So you'll see next another picture and an activity log to go with it that says this employee was on lunch from 12:00 to 1:00 o'clock. So what'd they do with their lunch break? Well, they're the Southside Inspector, they did a call before their lunch on Prospect, a call after their lunch on B Street, but they made sure to come and park at my house for their lunch break. That's not harassing a citizen because they're reporting what you're doing? So I mean, there needs to be oversight. There's clearly not oversight. Every time you file a right-to-know, it's denied because it's a safety concern or it doesn't exist, and then it goes through the appeal process, and the city looks like fools. I have nine appeals. I've won every single one so far that's been returned back because the city just lies consistently to hide the misconduct instead of saying, hey, we have a problem here. I mean, you have four activity logs that confirm they were off, they were all doing nothing for three hours together, so.
Thank you. Sean McAndrew?
How are you? Sean McAndrew, taxpayer. I'm also a Scranton School Board Director, so I first want to say I'm speaking on my behalf and not behalf of the entire board. I spoke here a few months ago regarding the homeless camps on Olive Street in the Harries Trail. I first want to ask city council, has anything been done to address this issue? Okay. I also attended a meeting with the police chief, fire chief, administrators from the district, and representatives from council. I did ask to look into maybe an ordinance banning homeless camps at least maybe 1,000 feet from school properties, so I was wondering if that has been completed or has been looked into at all by any chance?
Sean, I haven't heard anything about that at all.
Okay.
Sean, I will tell you, we, I forwarded some information on a potential ordinance today to our solicitor that could hopefully address some of the concerns you're expressing now.
Awesome, okay, I appreciate that.
And I will say, Sean, last night, or yesterday at about 4:00, me and Mr. Smearle met with the police department, the railroad, some of the city administration, the solicitor from the city, so it's been, there's been conversation.
Moving, okay. I asked because when I spoke with council, I expressed my concerns regarding, you know, the issues that are going on there. Every day, our students walk by, and then it's a dangerous area, especially when they go to and from Scranton High. I also expressed the safety issues for our residents who enjoy walking or running the trail, but also our cross-country runners who use it for practice. And unfortunately, it was brought to my attention last night that either Thursday or Friday, one of our cross-country members was harassed and almost assaulted by an individual around the homeless camps. The safety and their students have always and will always be my number-one priority, and I can, and I know the safety of our residents and our students are definitely, you know, everybody's priority up here. So I'm begging for an ordinance to be looked into, banning it from all properties for schools, daycares, colleges, and other measurements taken in place, maybe more patrolling, I don't know. I know I probably have to talk to the police department, because I, I feel like enough's enough. I'm not sure if any of you have visited those areas yet, but if you have to, I, you know, definitely suggest you do because it's very eye-opening. You know, I did, when I did speak with the administration, I was told that, you know, they can't just take down the tents or they can't go through them because of, they have rights and you need warrants. But I do ask, you know, if that was a taxpayer's property, you know, the code officials would be there. We'd be getting fines and tickets and quality-of-life citations. So I'm wondering, you know, if that's going to be, people's, we're saying that's their residence, why aren't we doing the same? Because, again, if it was at my property or any of your properties or anybody else's property, I'm sure they'd be having a field day with writing tickets. To me, this is just the tip of the iceberg. It's just a matter of, you know, if, not when, something more tragic happens, and I'm hoping we can work together as a community to look, look into this and try to stop this. You know, the trail was built for our residents and our students to enjoy it, not fear it. And I'm, you know, begging for the council, the administration, and the school district to work together to come up with a solution because, you know, this is unsanitary and it's unsafe, and our kids and our community deserve a little better. So if you have any questions for me, you know, I, I could talk to you after.
Mr. McAndrew, so I, because of contractual, an event I had, stay yesterday at work, I was unable to go to the homeless meeting, but was it discussed about, because I know we've thrown this around, about creating an ordinance, and guess what? Cities across the country have done it with success, creating an ordinance that prevents homeless camps near daycares, schools, and I agree with you, it's not if, it's just when, and it's getting very close to that. And I know these meetings are probably going to be productive, and, and I hope they are, but, you know, these meetings, like other, every other meeting is, we got to form a committee, we got to do a study, we got to start planning, we got to, you know, provide housing. That takes months, maybe years, but it only takes a second to hurt a student. And if that almost happened the other day, it's unacceptable. So in fifth order, I'll, I'll make a motion that we explore an ordinance. And, and I know, Mr. King, you spoke earlier about with regards to the river and ordinance to protect our rivers, and, but I think this needs to be part of that.
Yeah, I mean, it did happen. I mean, our student was physically, I believe a phone was slapped out of their hands when they were trying to walk away. So again, yes, it could have been a lot worse, and hopefully, God bless, it will never, it will be. Another thing, I know we talked, somebody spoke about affordable housing, I completely understand, but I do think a lot of these times when these discussions are happening, I don't think the school districts can ever invite it or have a seat at the table because wherever that location will be, a lot of families might be living there, might be students. So depending on the area, who knows what school in that vicinity that they would go to if there's capacity or not. So I think maybe when those discussions are taking place, if our superintendent or administration could be invited because we can definitely put some input if, in case schooling, obviously schooling will be needed, and make sure we have room for everybody.
So, Mr. McAndrew, I don't, you may or may not know this, so I've, I've been asking questions about the homeless candidates for over a year now. I've, I've been getting different answers all over the place. The last time the mayor was here, she did let us know that she's had a task force that's been around for over a year, which was news to me. This task force is going to be meeting, I think, next week, and some of the questions that came up last night, they said they were going to bring back to the task force.
Okay.
I've yet, it's yet to be seen what this task force is going to accomplish, but do you know if the school district has any representatives on that task?
I have never heard of a task force. Is it, is it a safety task force overall? Is it a, I mean, I'm not sure-
It's a task force to address the homeless.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would love for the district to have a seat at the table because, again, it surrounds, especially on Olive Street, surrounds our school, but I've, I've not been made aware of that. But again, I know if we're contacted, I'm sure our district would love to participate and help out as much as we can because if we succeed, you succeed, and vice versa. We're all here together, and, you know, a positive community will bring more families in here and put more kids in our district.
Yeah, I know some of the makeup that we were told on that task force is some of the, I don't know if you want to call them nonprofits, but some of the groups that are, some of the agencies that are helping, helping the issue of social services, Keystone Mission, things like that, but I don't, I didn't hear if there was a school district representative or-
Yeah, no, I mean, again, much as we can help, I would love to help, I just hope we're more helping than enabling, and I think we need to come together and make some real change here, so. I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks.
Thank you. That is all for the sign-in sheet. Anyone else would like to address council?
Tom Coymanuka. Just wanted to touch back quickly. About a year ago, we had the request from the landfill from the leche and possibly putting the leche into the, into the creeks, and there was a big hubbub about the, whether or not it would go to the Scranton Sewer Authority, the former Scranton Sewer Authority, and be treated there, or else it would be reverse osmosis, osmosis-treated, and then dumped into our rivers that go through Naog Park. Has there been any feedback whatsoever, follow-up on the request for dumping large amounts of leche into our waterways?
Not that I know of.
Now to move on. Tonight, instead of the normal subjects, I'm going to go off- Tonight, instead of the normal subjects, I'm going to go off, off kilter from them. What I want to talk about is a group called Be the Match. No, that's not a dating site. That's the old name for the National Marrow Donor Program. A number of years ago, I signed up for the program. There was a kid down in Maryland who needed a donor and I went in with a bunch of other people and we all did the cheek swaps. Well, I was not the match for that one, but I went on vacation. I was out at Crater of Diamonds Park digging for diamonds and I got a phone call. I actually matched a person with, with six of their antigens, which is what they use to search to see whether or not you're compatible. From that point, I came back, had a blood test done and I wound up being the match for the donor. This was a lady in, in Germany who had acute myelitic leukemia. To give you an idea what that is, is the body starts kicking out malformed blood cells, white blood cells, red blood cells that don't have the capability to fight infection or to carry oxygen. And what happens as these malformed cells continue to produce, they actually block out the cells that are doing the real good job in the body and slowly but surely, they lose the capability of transmitting oxygen through iron and fighting infections and eventually they die. It was a scary thought when I got that call, but I learned a lot of things in the process. First pro, first part is it's a cheek swab. That's all that it is. That gives six leukocyte antigens, HLAs, which are the used for initial matching. And you get a blood draw when you are selected as one of those few people who might be a match. And they look for ten matching, the ten matching segments. The more matches, the less likely there's going to be rejection. At that point, when you're confirmed, you get scheduled, they schedule a person to have their bone marrow destroyed and your bone marrow is basically put into that person's body. The old way that it used to be done that everyone fears about is you used to chunk into the hip, take, take bone marrow out of the leg. And it was a, a process where they had to break into the leg bone and all that stuff. So there's a lot of fear behind it. But that's not how it's actually done these days. Ninety percent of the time, what is done is they put forth a product called Flugestrin into your system. Get five injections, five days before donating. It causes the stem cells in your marrow to flood your blood system. And just like donating blood or more of like donating blood plasma, they take the blood out the arm, it gets filtered in a machine, it can return back into the other arm minus those stem cells. For five days, you feel like an old man with arthritis because that superproduction of the stem cells makes it creak and bend over. But after that, it's done. The process for donating, you sit in a chair for five to eight hours, watch TV, listen to the radio or sleep, one in arm, out the other. A sandwich-sized package is all that winds up being taken out. And from that one action, you can save a life. It costs absolutely nothing to get on the registry, to get a cheek swab and to be out there so that anyone in the community can have a risk of, can have the ability not only to save any member of this community, but anyone else in the world. And I would ask that people take the time out, knowing that it is no longer an invasive situation, that all it is is the same as donating blood, to take the time out and be a donor to save someone else's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dach, resident and taxpayer. This morning in the paper, there was an announcement, there was a robbery up on Main Avenue where there was some shooting and the one victim succumbed to his injuries. So, I don't know, it kind of sounds like that guy might have been a schizophrenic off of his meds or something. I don't know why you have to shoot somebody, but if you have a gun and you're going to rob them anyway. But it's just a shame and hopefully, hopefully things will work out better in the future. P A Water and Tommy also brought up about the Naples dumping water over that would run under 380 area and, or the entrance to it and down into Naog Creek, which runs through the gorge. I don't think that's entirely necessary. I think they're making enough money that they can pay to send that money, water down to the sewage treatment plant. If they don't like that, raise the rates for New Jersey and New York trash. As far as the big spill with all of that sludge that they flushed out of the dam, you know, finding them, you're just going to pay more. You're going to pay more for your water. They're figured into their operating costs and a half. Good time will be had by all except for the ratepayers. So my point is, maybe what we should do is go after the board of directors and they should be kicked off the board of directors at P A American Water and someone take it over that's willing to run it responsibly. You know, probably millions of dollars, maybe millions a month are spent on water bills in Scranton for clean water and to preserve nature and everything else. A good time's had by all except once again, the ratepayers. Double bills, destroyed sidewalks, destroyed curbs. They took my hundred-year-old curb out, which my biggest problem was some yah-yah from across the street with this fat mobile parking up, trying to park up on my sidewalk. And he got told about it, so fortunately he moved because then he was throwing garbage out of his car in the front. And I'm glad he's gone. But, you know, there's a big chunk of the curb missing and somebody will see that modified stone laying there and that they just threw on top of it all and oh, that looks like a driveway. Oh, yeah, you know? And someday, maybe a city inspector will come by and say, I have to fix all that or something. And a good time won't be had by me. And once again, 501(c)(3)'s and (c)(4)'s. Please do your work and a lot of it's very admirable, admirable. And, but there's a few that want to come up with bright ideas that are going to cost a lot of money and just result in a little ornamentation here and there or a streetscape. Don't run my life and don't run my town. Not needed. If you want to contribute, then work in your area and that's it. And by the way, don't rag over flags up here. Call your representatives, call representatives out of the area and ask for Ukraine rescue immediately. Putin's taken over. He has 25% of the world grain production. Ukraine's another 20%. The more he has, the more he uses to just cause trouble. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher, citizen of the city. Norma is big on this first item that I have because of the, the corner. The corner that has the Salvation Army, Kitty Corner, Great Temptations, Wonderful Bakery. Then there's an electronics store and Kitty Corner from that is a warehouse. Now, I came home and I pulled out a map so I could find out what they, what those streets are. Now that's a pretty big, I think, corner. And there wasn't a single sign. It turns out that they are Hickory Street, South Washington. And I don't know what the other two were, remember what the other two were. But I would think it would be nice to have some identification there. But then on a, I'll go further and it used to be before they did some work, I think it was all, I don't know all what they did, but they took the, when you were coming from Bellevue and crossing that street, they used to have signs. One was turn right, go left or go ahead. Now there's nothing up there. So, I mean, I almost got my car and I almost got smashed one day because I was going straight out and so was somebody else and, you know, it just, it needs something. And the, the drain that is at the corner where Great Temptations is, is, we'd had some rain and you have to swim. I don't know when the last time that drain was cleaned out. It was well over a, a whole lane. And, and that leads me to the drainage. Do we, do we have a schedule for when the drains are cleaned out? I mean, I remember one of the big things in the, for the summer when I was a kid was seeing the, the guy come down with the big thing and they would take the grill off the, the stormwater basin and they'd go in there and they'd get out all kinds of stuff and put it in a garbage truck. And I don't know if they even do that at all anymore. I think that has to be looked into because there's too many, too many drains that make you have to walk down the block to get back onto the sidewalk. And now, have we received any recent reports from our lobbyist and from our nurse that?
I had asked, I think, two weeks ago and I just got the answer yesterday. So I could report that out.
So there'll be, you going to do it tonight or is it going to be in third order next week?
Actually, I'm thinking some of the answers are long, so maybe Frank, if we can get it in the third order next week.
Okay. And do we have a, something on the licensing and inspections? I mean, for the last, I don't know how many weeks, that's what we've been talking about. I'm surprised we haven't heard anything tonight yet. But do we have any statistics? Like how many of the people that went out and did things were not qualified to do it? Do we know how many there are in the?
I'd say a week ago, we got some dates when that one inspector was given his license and we got an answer that the inspectors operate under Mr. Olesky and, and Mr. Sunday.
All, all the inspectors are licensed and they're all, they all passed the test. All of our current inspectors. Unless there's a new hire, I don't know of this week.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I hope we keep on that and I will see you next week. Thank you.
Mr. Waldenberg, can we see if we could contact DPW about a schedule for drainage cleanout? When they do that? And we should probably also look into, I agree with Mrs. Schumacher. When you're coming from Bellevue West Side, it used to be delineated exactly which lane was turning and which one was right. Now, I can't even remember which one was the turning lane and which one was the straight lane. So it's potluck.
When it comes to, it's, it's South Washington, that when you come across that broad, the bridge there coming from Bellevue, it's the South Washington intersection, we got, actually, we got a couple of different people. I think we got an email quite a while back and then I think someone brought it up here. But didn't we get an answer back saying that that was going to be paved and the lines would be put back once the area was paved?
That's correct. It'll be paved and it has to be 45 degrees and warmer to do the line markings.
Yeah, so we, but we did get that. We didn't get a date on, on that work though. And then the drain was, I think Marie may have brought it up once before. Did we ever get an answer on the drain or do we know if they went down at that?
I could check. I don't believe so.
I feel like that.
But I could have them go out on that drain.
I feel like that was probably in the fall. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel. Pat LaFrance, city resident. I was hoping Mr. Strutnick would have stayed because he has some documentation on what I wanted to ask about tonight. Back on the February, two weeks ago, on the February 27th meeting, Mr. Schmerl, Mr. Strutnick provided a picture of your Schmerl plumbing truck in Mr. Olesky's detail shop. And I would like to know, because of my further dealings with the city down the road, I need to know about, did you lie to the public at that meeting? Well, what had happened is the picture of your truck in Tom Olesky's detail shop appeared. And Mr. Strutnick, you, you, your response to Mr. Strutnick was, oh, Tom Olesky owns a, and I think you said body shop first, but then you said details. You were unaware of it. But Mr. Strutnick has some documents of an email to council from him and also another person who complained about this before that truck was in the shop. And you were involved in that email and everybody else in council was involved in that email. And that email went from council to Mr. Waldenberg and back to the two and it was told this is a personal affair, so you can't get involved. So you knew about that shop in August and you told the people on city council meeting, oh, he has a buy shop? Oh, he has a detail shop? Did you lie to the people?
I don't, I still don't believe it's his detail shop.
Oh, if it's not, I'm wrong. And I will say that. Is that, is there further details the public should know about that?
I don't believe I should explain where I have my trucks detailed and where any work is done. And that was my partner's truck for one. And, and the, I can't remember the name of it, nor would I say it on council because, but what's the problem with having a truck detailed in?
Well, it's not a problem with me, sir. It's not a problem with me. How long have you been in Scranton? Twenty years, let's say, fifteen years? For 15, 20 years in South Scranton, I watched Gerald Schmerl Plumbing and Heating. Gerald Schmerl Plumbing and Heating. City of Scranton, Gerald Schmerl Plumbing and Heating. All of a sudden, somebody brings up a questionable ethic, ethics agreement, situation. And all of a sudden, no, that's my partner. It's Gerald Schmerl and partner. This is an ethics situation, sir. Do you have a personal relationship with Tom Olesky?
Personal relationship?
Yes.
No, I do not.
No? Do you have a business relationship with Gerald Schmerl Plumbing and Tom Olesky's supposed body shop?
I have no idea who owns the shop. I, I, I don't believe it's him.
Okay, well, I'll look into that because that's the first I'm hearing it, so I will. You know, because I don't want to blame anybody who's not at fault, so I will look into that. But I just wanted to ask you, I noticed that while it was going on and I'm like, wait a second. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. And if I'm wrong, I'll look into it and I'll apologize to you, but that's what I saw at the council meeting, so I figured I'd question it. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council, Lynn Lebraski, Scranton homeowner and business owner. I didn't come really prepared with anything tonight. I've been listening to the last few, couple of months of the city council meetings. And in the last few weeks, I've been hearing a lot about code enforcement. I've been up here several times back in 2022 and we had some code enforcement issues, zoning issues, and nothing ever got done. My husband and I ended up having to seek an injunction, hire a lawyer, spend thousands of dollars out of pocket, which we never recovered. And even after zoning weighed in our favor, the property's still being used as the person wants to use it for. So you can go back in your records and check on that. I myself also have written to Right to Know, there's no records. I received photos from the Right to Know, which were photos I took. All the times I reached out to 311 or Code Enforcement, no one ever went out and took photos. The only photos, unless you can find some, are the ones that, again, I took. I took the liberty the other day of going, the way I normally go to work and between my home and my business, it's 1.6 miles, so luckily for me, I save a little gas there, but I couldn't go a block without seeing a code violation, not one block. And the garbage is just, it's starting to look like Philadelphia, there's garbage everywhere in the city. It's, it's really disrespectful. But, um, so the next day, I went a different route to work and again, 1.6 miles, and I couldn't go a block in the other direction without seeing a code violation. I happen to live one block away from Tom Olesky, the Code Enforcement Director, and I know for a fact that the person I had the issue with, they know each other. When I tried to present that to Mayor Cognetti's office and City Council, I was called a conspiracy theorist. I was actually told a while back by Mayor Cognetti's, at the time, assistant, he kept saying, well, we, 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 and I said, well, who's we? And he said, you know, we, the royal we. So that's, that's our government. They think they're royal and that this, this, you know, the residents of Scranton don't matter. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Scranton. I went to school here, I raised four children here. All four of my children moved out of Scranton. I had, my oldest son bought a home, he has two children, I have two grandchildren and I warned him not to buy a house in Scranton. Two years later, he moved to Pittston. So, none of my kids are in Scranton anymore. It's just sad, it just makes me sad, the corruption that goes on, especially in code, code enforcement, because, again, I live a block away from the director. His, the house on the right of him is code violations, the house on the left of him is code violations. The whole back alley is filled with garbage and debris and code violations. Cars parked on the corner where the bank is and you can't see to get out to make the turn. There's some furniture on the other side. I believe I saw Mr. Olesky put some, looked like maybe some dressers out there the other day, right in front of his house. And when I came back through a little while later, some of that furniture was on the other side of the street in front of the home where there was a murder. Now, I heard from some neighbors in my block that Mr. Olesky knew what was going on at that house. There was people dancing in the street in their underwear, high on meth in the middle of the hours of the morning and you would think that the Code Enforcement Director would have done something about that before the murder happened. So, it's just very disheartening to know that somebody that's a director of a department can't do their job. And I guess that's why I came tonight, because I've been hearing a lot of this and I'm sure there's more people in the City of Scranton that would agree with the things that are going on. I myself have seen Mr. Olesky detailing vehicles out of his back alley. And I'm sure most people wouldn't get away with that, or whatever he does back there, I don't know. I would just think that you'd want a code enforcer that's going to enforce the codes. So, I'm out of time, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Rick Little. Why do we have a court reporter here?
That's our stenographer.
Pardon me?
They, they may be doing it from here tonight, they're, I don't know.
It's our council stenographer, she does all of our meetings. She had a civil service commission meeting next door, so she decided to stay for our meeting. So this is the first time, might be the first time you're seeing her in person.
You're doing it live tonight?
Yeah.
Well, it's good, it's good because the thing everybody needs most is transparency. Transparency in the government, city, county, state, national. And in our courts. Lots of times, people get scared of the courts because they can't afford them. Courts are actually a business. Became a business around the time bar associations came in, around the time of the 14th Amendment, around the time when the big setup for equality was being set up, which has gone on to this day. I'm 33 days homeless and it's freezing to death. It's, you get out of the, the Catholic services filter and you're just hoping that a bus will come. And you realize it's Sunday, there's no buses on Sunday. You just lose all sense of time. But it lets you focus on recurring sites and people like the court reporter. There's something wrong in them evicting a 71-year-old man from Scranton Housing Authority in the courts. And I know exactly why. Because people who've got, got the student loans and went to law school at the approved bar association law, it's a lot of work to become a lawyer. I learned how to law in New York State trying to save my child. It's really not that hard. In New York, it's one book called New York Practice. But that's the key to it all, it's in the practice. It's who you know. And I was an idiot thinking I could defend myself from Scranton Housing Authority, even though they're, they're a not-for-profit. They're immensely rich. So they can hire the best law firm in Scranton, the same one that defends the school board, Scanlon, Hallie, and Doherty, to evict me. And in no small part in them being used to evicting people for about 28 years, going back to like 1996 when they made the lease. We can evict you if you don't follow our rules. Yet, the main rule of HUD, of the Field Office of HUD, is to make sure that people are not homeless and to find funding for them if they can't afford homelessness. And I guess I'm out of time, so I hope the movie theater comes through. I hope we get our public access back and this is a great idea, great idea. Accurate, accurate transparency of what everybody says at a point in time.
And Mr. Little, Mr. Little, those minutes are all online, they're posted online. They, they are all posted online, the city council minutes.
She typically does this remotely, but she was here tonight, so she just came in and had a seat.
Good evening, Council, Mike Mancini, Scranton. I too have a count, 154 days. That's the amount of time that I've been waiting for the documents pertaining to the sale of Scranton Sewer Authority, the Scranton Parking Authority. Earlier during caucus, you met with parking officials and you had questions for them, but you never even saw the agreement for the sale of the parking authority itself. Those documents are to be retained for the life of the contract and I've been informed prior to this meeting that this body still does not have those documents. Instead of asking, how about demanding once in a while? Seems like when you demand and you put this administration on, on importance, you get results. I was here last Tuesday. I spoke about all the decorations that were still at the Naught Park. All right, they were finally taken down the next day. This body needs to hold this administration accountable. All right, you hear about the, the permits. This is the first line as far as blight is concerned. I mentioned this several times about the railway authority coming through. You have to have somebody here from the Greenwich Neighborhood Association talking about 1615 Mulkey. And I remember the address, all right? I'd even have to write it down. This administration knew about that property for well over a year. As that property diminishes, other properties look to refinance, some look to purchase. This property becomes an exterior obsolescence. What that means is it brings down the value of properties around it. These properties are popping up all over the city. This administration doesn't see the blight because she's from Oregon. So blight to her is a little bit, but to me, Mr. King, Mr. Schuster, Mr. Schmerl, Mr. McCandrew, we see that, we grew up here. We see these, these corners, these streets turn, okay? And as they turn, so do the people. All right? We've come to a point where you cannot even go into a mini-market safely without having a problem. Okay? She's putting our lives at risk, she's putting the officers who protect us on a daily basis at risk because there's only 80%, all right? I've had the opportunity over the last 154 days to take a look at the budget. You're looking at between 6.8 and 8.3 million dollars shortfall. That's because this administration does not know how to articulate time management, okay? You're only as good as the people you surround yourself with. Unfortunately, this mayor is a know-it-all, a whole bunch of know-nothings. When you have, you like that, huh? When you have your business administrator from outside the city, doesn't even drive down the streets, swear missing the potholes, missing the manhole covers, where's, where's the, the attempt at trying to fix things? It's just pure arrogance from top to bottom. You have it with the park's director who sits his butt down in an office instead of being certified to allow kids to swim and/or elderly. We pay for that seven days a week, it's utilized, what, one day a week? This is ridiculous, all right? And if you could actually sit here and say things are okay, you're just as much responsible for the problem. All right? It's time that we take our city back. It's time that we give the, the city back to its people, all right? There is no money that could come from out of state that will get her reelected. I assure you of that. Your arrogance will become your downfall. That pool has been closed for five years. Just imagine kids growing up from age 12 to 17, okay? Not being able to utilize that pool, not being able to get down to Weston Field or up to Connel, right? What do they do? As we take things away from our kids, it's easier for them to go in a different direction. And we're seeing it far too often. We have over 100 kids in our Scranton school system that are considered gang active, okay? And as we have three administrations, our last three, that faltered, we see our blight going out to other areas of the county. Nicholson, Old Forge, Mayfield, that's where these individuals got pulled from, okay? I apologize to those from out of the area for three bad administrations, but I assure you, pickleball page will be gone. Have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I just want to highlight something good that has gone on in the city that was just highlighted recently. That our S and P rating did go from minus BBB to, it skipped by BBB rating and is now BBB plus. That didn't happen by accident. I know that we had to make some tough decisions over the last few years, which included having to raise, do some small incremental tax increases over the last few years. We voted to refinance the bond, which resulted in this increased S and P rating and will result in well over a million dollars savings to the city over the life of the, the bond. And we've recently started developing a capital fund, which something was mentioned earlier, we need to start doing. And it's the first time in, I don't know, a long time that we're actually investing in a capital fund. So I think there are some good things happening. I don't disagree that there are many challenges that we have in this city that need to be addressed and we'll continue to push the administration to try to make those things happen. But I do think it's a great thing that our creditworthiness has increased to the point of BBB plus and that that is good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I do have a few. We did get a lot of questions, well, we got questions, answers for questions over the last two weeks back. I'm gonna try to get through some of them. There is quite a lot, but if we could get it into- There is quite a lot, but if we could get it into third order for next week. First thing I want to start off with was Ferdinand Street. A while back, some of the residents came in for the top of Ferdinand Street, above the 1000 block. And I know that the administration said they were going to get out to fix some of the issues that were going on there, but I've been up there several times since then, and I haven't seen much done. Can we just reach out and see what, what any updates are for the top of Ferdinand Street?
Would that be the 1800 blocks, sir?
It's definitely above 10. I don't know what the addresses go up as it goes up the hill, but it goes from Kaiser Avenue up to the Dead End.
That was scheduled to be paved. I'll follow up.
All right. Thank you, Frank. We did have a meeting yesterday about, that I had called because I was speaking with the railroad about addressing the homeless in the city of Scranton. They did say they were going to go back. There was a task force that's been formed that we found out about, I'd say, two weeks ago. But if we could reach out to see if council could get some kind of update once they have their next meeting, what are legal steps forward, what our law department is doing, and updates from that meeting that they have.
I'll get that information.
Thank you. Norm, I don't know if you're going to be happy about the answer I got, but I'll give you the answer that I received, so.
It's what you're waiting for, are you?
I wish that was the answer. So it said that, so the project totaled $306,000. That was the piece that you had here from last week. The grant funds were expended per that multimodal grant, and they did sign, street signage in South Scranton, is what the administration gave me.
But apparently not South Washington and Hickory.
Correct. Some of the signs in South Side are some of the signs that I cannot read the names on them. There are a lot of faded signs in the South Scranton area. The question was answered twice, so it said, "May council please have an update on the street sign project? Any related funding secured for the projects in 23 and 24? The city is awaiting the state's decision on the multimodal grant that was applied for in September of '23. The city has entered into a contract with a third-party MAC signs to install street signs in West Scranton this spring." Now, I know when I reached out about some signs that I got calls about, I was originally told that the city was addressing Hill Section signs first. So I just, since you've started on this journey, I've heard we're addressing the Hill Section. I've just heard we're addressing South Side, and then the new recent one will be addressing West Side. Last week, I asked for a breakdown of that $306,000, but we didn't get a breakdown of that, so.
We did not.
If we could maybe reach back out and get that breakdown of how that money was spent.
I will.
Rubicon rollout. We did have a meeting about Rubicon. They told us the rollout was going to happen in January. In that meeting, they did let us know that it wasn't going to happen in January, but it would be happening soon. So on March 6, we had a review, a review call what Rubicon for the submission required for optimization. We have to make two document adjustments based on the data and requirements for formatting for the alleys and a unique identifier for the addresses. We'll have another review next week to know of the acceptance of the data set to be in optimization. We'll send guidance on the expected delivery date at that time. There's also two more paragraphs here, but I'll leave it at that. I asked about how we fund it. We were told about a housing needs assessment that was done at our caucus two weeks ago, and I asked how that was funded. So the Scranton Area Foundation was contracted with Forsyte to develop a housing needs assessment for Scranton. While the city has been at the table helping to guide the scope of the work, the city is not providing the funding. The housing needs assessment is funded through 75% from the Weinberg Foundation and 25% from the Scranton Area Foundation itself. We got an update on Nassimun. So the services to the city and their projects and performance since the last report, Nassimun LLP has been in touch with the administration on the following opportunities: EV chargers/lCCC programs, recompete grant, hydrogen hub possibilities for Scranton, addressing the 243 million plus-up at SAAP, abandoned mine issues, the EPA and PA American Water, 200 million for Pennsylvania drinking water improvements, the Amtrak line to Scranton, and the SAAP. So they're the eight things that they have helped the city with since our last update. Council billing. It appears the answer I got back was I have expanded the scope of my question, so they're going to be looking at that and probably looking for some more clarification on what I want there. So that's going to take, I'm probably never going to see those documents, to be honest with you. For FEMA, there's 53 FEMA projects that, from the flooding in 2018, that need to be complete, and 25 of the 53 have been completed. The deadline for that, I think, was in 2023. They got a extension to 2024, and then recently, they've gotten an extension till October. So of those 53 original projects that were identified in 2018, 25 of the 53 have been complete. That's my update for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a few.
Thank you. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, a few. So to start off, we've been talking about homeless for over a year. It's not, it's not an issue that just happened this year. It's getting worse. We understand. We sympathize. I sympathize. I know there's a task force that met a couple times. We need an update from them. I know there was a meeting the other day, like I said, contractually, I had an obligation at work. I couldn't make it. I got a little summary that, you know, we're going to seek grants, we're going to look for low-income housing, but that's fine, and we need to have a plan. I'm glad there's a plan. But we also need to plan how we're going to protect the residents and the students of our city. So, and we've discussed this for a little bit, not much, but we did discuss that something might happen. It's not, you know, it's not if, it's when, and when is here. Something almost happened the other day. So with that said, I'm thrilled, like I said, I'm thrilled there's plans to provide housing. I'm thrilled there's plans to, you know, to address the issues, but they take time. I don't think we should take time when it comes to the safety of our students and residents. So with that said, I would like to make a motion for Solicitor Gilbry to explore and research an ordinance that prohibits homeless camps within so many feet of educational facilities, like the high school, of course, daycares, and any other educational facility related to that. I know it's been done. I've read a couple articles about it, so I don't think it's that difficult. So with that said, that's my motion.
I'll second that motion. I think we do need to explore some of the options in terms of an ordinance to address some of the situations, and I do think we need to research that and come to a conclusion.
Do you have a motion in the second floor?
On the question? I'm fully in support of researching this. I have been doing just a little research myself. You may find that there's a lot of protections out there for the homeless, and they've been challenged. So we need to tread lightly. I think, you know, obviously, this is a huge problem, and there are no easy solutions because it exists everywhere across. If there were easy solutions, it would be resolved. But Portland, San Francisco, Scranton, New York City, Philadelphia, it doesn't matter where you go, there are homeless, and there's homeless encampments, and it does seem to be growing, and it's absolutely an issue and concern. I'm all for, let's look into this and see if there's a possibility to develop an ordinance that could address it around schools and any type of educational institutions. I also want to pursue, I sent you an ordinance, Attorney Gilbry, that has passed out in Colorado, you know, around waterways. We happen to have a waterway that travels very closely to Scranton High School. So, you know, perhaps, I believe that that ordinance has not been challenged, and it seems like it's working to address the issues of encampments near our waterways. You know, hopefully, there will be some ordinances out there that have, you know, been able to hold up against any challenges to prevent homeless camps near and around schools. I'm all for that as well, but I also want to pursue that other ordinance as well. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? No? I'll say I'm also for anything that will try to alleviate the problem we're having with homeless people. I don't believe anything would hurt having Attorney Gilbry research and see if there's anything that we can do or find to actually try to keep our students safe from all of this and our neighborhoods also. So with that said, we had a motion in the second. All in favor of having Attorney Gilbry research an ordinance for the homeless? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Okay. So secondly, I had another issue that was brought to my attention actually today. Let's see. Where is it? It was about the park. Let me see. Well, I'm missing some of it or part of it, but the concern was someone up to Naught Park and one of the, one of the areas where, this was an issue last year, I think, I think so too, where the swing sets are, there's rusty nails, and there's, there's very dangerous pieces of that area that need to be addressed. A kid's going to get hurt, so of course, we're talking about kid safety again. So could you reach out to Parks Director, make sure that he goes up there and takes a look at that and does whatever he needs to do to prevent our kids from getting hurt up there?
I will, Mr. McCandrick.
Okay. So also, I received multiple complaints about the ANZ Hotel. It's formerly known as the Sheridan Inn on 300 Meadow Avenue. I know there was a recent drug bust there, but prior to the drug bust and since then, residents have informed me of very suspicious activity going on in the parking lot and the hotel, they believe itself. I know there might be an ongoing investigation, and that's fine. Sometimes, you know, we don't hear back because it's being investigated, and of course, that's, we don't want any compromising information reported back, but can we please get an incident slash call report from the police department as this also might relate to our nuisance ordinance? Also, since changing ownership of this hotel, I would like to request or know if there was a health inspection done, because that's the normal procedure when business changed hands. And also, in addition to that, from the fire department, was there a fire code inspection when the business changed hands? Because I'm hearing a lot of sanitary issues that are being relayed to me and very suspicious behavior by a few people. Also, since we're talking about that, a few months ago back, same residents brought concerns about a traffic safety issues in that same block, and I requested a traffic study. Can we please get an update on the traffic study? Also, but I know we were told part of the, you know, the safety issue up there is the lines and crosswalks that would be repainted this spring. So we'd like an update on when, when that'll be done, and if they proceed with the traffic study. If not, we still need that. Also, I would like an update on the work that was done in front of and on the side of a property on 300, no, I'm sorry, 3100 Atlanta Drive. It's at the corner of Reese and Atlanta. I notice even by driving by there every day from work that, that there was a lot of work done by DPW and the Water Company. So the problem is now that property remains, it's not finished. So, and I'm not sure who's responsible to complete the paving of it. The poor guy who lives there in front of his garage was torn up and not filled. He can't even get in his garage, and it's very visible the other, other parts of that road when I'm trying to go home. So, Mr. Fodenberg, would you please reach out to both DPW and the Water Company for clarification as to who is responsible for paving it and when it will be addressed?
I will, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So in addition to that, I have received quality life concerns on the property of the 1400 Shimp Court in Fisher Place. It's right off 300 Fig, and, you know, would you please alert code enforcement of these concerns? I guess there's, there's a lot of rubbish, and there's, and it's been there for a while, so they really need, that needs to be looked at. Also, so I got some answers to questions I posed over the past couple of weeks. So, and I've asked this question before in the past, so, but one of the concerned residents asked if we complete background checks, and the response I got from administration is we are currently working with our fire and police departments to increase the rigor of our current background checks for any director-level positions. Note, this cost is approximately $15 for a basic level check. $15 is not a bad investment if we keep these employees, because we seem to have a lot of them that are, you know, a lot of turnover, so if we do it right, maybe it's worth the Also, Mr. Spindler's not here tonight, but I wish he was. So he asked about, first, he asked me about, you know, there's, how they patch potholes in Wilkes-Barre. They have a hot patch machine. I never saw one. It sounds pretty cool. Sounds like it's a great idea. I brought that up last week, and then I heard, prior to me bringing it up, that the city had one at one time. So my question was inquiring about that. So the response I got from the question was, "May the administration please explain the reason and timeframe surrounding the damaged pothole patch machine?" I didn't know it was even damaged. "...that was not repaired and moved from use by the DPW. Residents council meeting have expressed the success, Mr. Spindler, of the one in Wilkes-Barre." So the answer we received from administration is, "We are exploring pothole patch processes that would be more effective than those currently employed, including the new hot patch process that Wilkes-Barre started." So that's the answer to that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I also inquired about the machine, that pothole machine, the city, and I was, it was many years ago. I'm thinking about nine or 10 years ago, I remember it, and I believe it was shared between Scranton and Dunmore. And then after that, I heard it was pretty much, it was just gone, and that's all I have on that, because there isn't anything else about it. Another thing on Cedar Avenue, 512 Cedar Avenue, I guess we've had numerous complaints about there, but code enforcement is still involved, and the zoning officer is involved in that also. And our hub test, it is continuing, and there are still many, a large amount of non-taxable properties that need additional research. So we still have to go to the county assessor's office with them, but we can't just dump them all at one time, so it's going to take a little bit of time, but that has not ceased. It is still in the works. That's all I have, Mr. Fodenberg.
5B for an introduction, an ordinance converting a certain portion of the 600 Block of Deacon Street from a one-way street to a two-way street, from 625-628 Deacon Street to its intersection with Sanderson Avenue.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Some oaths?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm all for introducing this this evening, but obviously, we wanted to explore, you know, some of those concerns that were expressed by Mrs. Augustini, so at least this gives us time. We'll introduce it tonight, and hopefully, if we get some information back, it can possibly be amended to address the concerns by the residents.
Yeah, and the question, I think if a traffic study is completed, it should be able to address what was brought up tonight.
I agree, and your request is a reasonable one. Two more stop signs? That's reasonable.
I can ask you something, but they are closing the Park Street Bridge, which is only going to increase traffic and allocation. It's being closed as of the 20th.
That would be the way I would drive.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for an introduction, a resolution authorizing the allocation of $1 million of funds from the balance of interest accumulated on the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city to the Capitol the city to the Capital Reserve Fund.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question.
On the question, so we're taking any interest, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. We're taking any interest and we're putting in the capital fund. Right, so when we do that, does that money that we go to use again have to be, like, follow the ARPA criteria or ARPA-driven?
I believe that by moving it into a capital reserve fund, that's a qualified, you know, I don't think we'd be doing it unless it fell under, you know, qualified, you know, option.
Even though it's interest versus the actual disparate fund?
I mean, I guess we can ask our solicitor to look into that, but I believe that...
I just want clarification.
Sure.
All right. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Have it. The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the allocation of $2 million of funds from the excess principal in the workers' compensation reserve trust account to the Capital Reserve Fund.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution amending Resolution Number 253, 2023, further amending Resolution Number 188, 2023, and further amending Resolution Number 46, 2022, entitled, Amending Number 175, 2021, authorizing, empowering, and directing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to appoint liaisons between the city of Scranton and Berchheimer, the duly-appointed collector of earned income tax for the Lackawanna County Tax Collection District, for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. To update city of Scranton representatives authorized to receive confidential tax information to include the position of senior accountant.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to upgrade certain traffic control devices in the city of Scranton and to make necessary applications for such on behalf of the city of Scranton.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, it's my understanding that we have to do this from time to time to upgrade these systems, but while we're at it, Mr. Volenberg, I can ask one more request. Could we get an update on the Greenlight Go projects that are to be completed in the city? I know a couple of weeks ago we asked, but did we get an update?
By coincidence, I asked that question today.
Thank you.
And I will have the answer.
All right, it's been several weeks now since we heard it, and we had a speaker that came in that was fearful that we were going to lose those grant monies for those necessary upgrades, so if we could stay on top of that.
It's presently with Baker International, Penn Dots engineer, but my question is out, so I should have an answer tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
And I believe they said it was out for bid. That's what I was told. And one more thing on this, Mr. Volenberg, it says for the address of this where it is, it says Cedar Avenue and Cherry Street. Wouldn't it be South Washington Avenue and Cherry Street, that the train crossing there, the railroad crossing there? Just to see if the address is correct.
I'll look into it, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed accounts on number 11, 2024, an ordinance creating a capital reserve fund to accumulate and disperse monies for capital expenditures as part of the city's long-term capital planning and to provide for the administration of said capital reserve fund by providing for sources of funds to sustain the capital reserve fund, prescribing the use of capital reserve funds, and authorizing the submission of a capital reserve fund spending plan.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, this is another example of making wise financial decisions. We haven't had a capital reserve fund in years. We were 30 years in Act 47, financial distress, and in the past two years, we just approved or introduced resolutions to move $3 million into a capital reserve fund. Our credit rating just went up because we refinanced a bond which is going to return well over $1 million to the city in savings, and, you know, we've wisely done some small incremental tax increases over the past few years. So I feel as though financially, these are wise decisions that are being made by the administration along with approval from city council, so I'm happy to support this.
All those in favor of, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, filed accounts on number 12, 2024, an ordinance ratifying the execution of a temporary construction easement agreement between Kathleen Kajarski and the city of Scranton to complete emergency stormwater debris removal following the September 9, 2023 storm.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, filed accounts on number 13, 2024, an ordinance enacting the towing ordinance of 2024 by repealing and replacing the city's towing and storage code.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I think, I'm sure some other people are going to speak on this, but some concerns were brought to light in council, and I think they need to be, we need to look into those concerns before we pass this in seventh order.
I did forward them back to Mr. Volenberg, and he informed me he'd sent it back to the administration, all of the questions that we received this morning. I would have hoped that they would have gotten them in maybe a little bit more timely fashion than four hours before we're doing this, but hopefully, if there are more questions, we can get them in sooner.
On the question, as the administration reviews the answer to some of those concerns expressed, I'm not necessarily in agreement with everything that was submitted three or four hours ago, but I believe some of the requests by the group are reasonable requests that may not have been included, you know, by the original committee who participated in trying to shape this new ordinance. So we'll let the administration review some of the things that were requested, really by just two individuals, I believe, and if we feel as though they're reasonable, then hopefully, we can pass a towing ordinance next week.
On the question, I too received the concerns, but we got them late. I was working. I didn't take a good dive into them, a deep dive into them, but I'm glad they were sent on to administration. I hope there's a little dialogue between now and next week for final passage.
Anyone else? I also, I was involved in a bit in this, and I do hope that we can come to a conclusion by next week, and I know not everyone is going to be happy with every part of this. You're not going to have 18 towing companies that are going to be happy with every detail of it, but most of it that had come down so far looked favorable for the city taxpayers. So that's all I have. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed accounts on number 6, 2024, amending Chapter 328 of Scranton City Code, parking lots and parking garages, to update and clarify administrative provisions for the licensing, regulation, inspection, and enforcement of certain off-street parking lots and parking garages.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for Committee on Finance?
As vice president for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
On the question?
So 7A.
7A.
Oh, I apologize. 7A, I was choking after that there. Now, what happened was I don't have the she here. Thank you. Mine skipped 7A, so I apologize. I correct. As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Yes.
She said yes. Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed accounts on number 7, 2024, amending filed accounts on number 102, 2015, an ordinance entitled, Amending the Administrative Code of the City of Scranton, Chapter 412, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 3, Governing Excavations by Making Additions, Deletions, Relitering, and Changing the Name of the Department in Portions of Section 3, Relating to Excavations in Order to Bring the Code Up-to-Date to Reflect Updated Reasonable Application Fees for Pave-Cut Permits.
As a chairperson for Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, filed accounts on number 8, 2024, amending Chapter 445 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Scranton to provide for the regulation of wireless communication facilities by the city.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for Committee on Community Development?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, filed accounts on number 9, 2024, Establishing Regulations Governing the Construction, Maintenance, and Operation of Facilities Within the Public Rights-of-Way of the City of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, filed accounts on number 10, 2024, Establishing Regulations Governing Excavations Within the Public Rights-of-Way of the City of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 19, 2024, Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials to Execute and Enter Into a Contract with Borton Lawson Engineering LLC to Perform East Mountain Stormwater and Drainage Improvements with Engineering and Related Services.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 20, 2024, Authorizing the City of Scranton to Accept the Stipend of Up to $5,000 from the National Youth Employment Coalition to be Used Towards Youth Outreach and Education.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, formerly 8A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 13, 2024, Approving the Intermunicipal Transfer of Restaurant Liquor License R15314, Currently Owned by Great Wall III, Inc., and Located at 1400 Monroe Avenue, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18509, to Saber Carabiner Restaurant Corp., Located at 1001 South Main Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18504, as Required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution Number 13, 2024.
This resolution was placed in seventh order for a final vote this evening. There are no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Please adjourn.